Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this April 16th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinnon?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brunner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Item number four, are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? Mayor, I'd like to move item 10E up to item 9A. Or before item 9A. So 10E before item 9A. All right. We have a motion by McDowell.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number five, a special presentation from Sharon Durling of the Illinois Aggregation Consultants. This will be a very interesting presentation because it deals with a little change in services.
Electricity, yes.
Yes.
You have a one-year contract that expires in August, but it's several months' process to roll up, so to get started with the process as it happens. So Clerk Spooner suggested that I talk a little bit about this meeting so you could receive offers and consider them at the next meeting. So I believe it's May 7th would be appropriate time to do that. I'm just talking to one of your constituents, someone I see here regularly, and she brought up an issue which is relative to that. So maybe I'll jump on that and then get into specifics of the electric aggregation program. A number of seniors, including Clerk Spooner, have received calls of surprising jumps in electricity costs. And that largely has not been about your supply and what we do with your electric aggregation is the supply that you've had to serve for about 10 years in your electric aggregation program. There was a CEGI Act that Governor Chris Kirkland signed in September of '21, I believe, had a credit for nuclear generation, and that credit was four cents per kilowatt hour, which that was kind of half of the supply cost. So that was a great boost for our bills. And that has since reverted to a debit of over two cents per kilowatt hour. So essentially, that's a six cents increase, and the supply is about six, seven cents per kilowatt hour. That's enormous. So I just wanted to, your constituents and everybody who has electric bill, everybody here to know, that's part of the big jump that we felt. And it's in the delivery portion, not the supply. I'm not here to talk about supply, but I just wanted to throw that out there, since that's kind of a basis for, you know, if you haven't seen a jump in your electric bill, that would be unusual. So happy to address any questions about that from you or your guests here tonight. But moving forward on the electric aggregation program, your current rate this month is a little over the ComEd rate. The ComEd rate is dropping, and we think it will drop further this year. So when we receive competitive bids next month, we think that probably the best thing for the city to do is to revert back to a program we had a few years ago. It was a ComEd price match where there were benefits to the city, and the rate that residents paid was always at the ComEd rate, which it really is a little bit. But it's been dropping lower, and despite what we've seen with the guests even this week, there are indications that that will drop lower, and we'll know that next month, May 7th, I'm here.
Okay. So what's your saying with your presentation, instead of going with the aggregation as we've done in the past? Our residents should go accept the ComEd rate?
Actually, not quite. I'm suggesting that continue an aggregation program at the ComEd rate, which you hit for several years in the term 2020 to 2023. It was a great program because the city received civic contribution, had a portion of green energy, but all the residents were enrolled at exactly the ComEd rate. So they didn't see financial savings from the program, but there were benefits for the city. That's what the council chose in 2020.
Yeah.
Because the ComEd rate's lower, that's great. If we get any bids that are below that ComEd rate next month, May 7th, I think that would be a great opportunity. But I don't see that in my crystal ball. It's just very unlikely.
Okay.
So just kind of want to give you a heads-up on that.
All right. Any questions from any of our commissioners? Okay.
Well, here's hoping that somebody can underbid ComEd. We'll see.
Were there couch numbers? Is that what you said?
No. I just said, let's hope somebody can underbid ComEd this time around.
You know, Commissioner Fisher, I think that's great. However, the other side of that, the ComEd rate is low, and I think it'll drop a half cent more, which is a big deal. So almost like that's okay, in a sense.
Yeah.
Because they're kind of beating themselves. Look in Wisconsin or Michigan or Indiana, and you're thinking, ooh, that's one reason I want to stay here in Zion, Illinois, because it's, we're beating the other states. We can look at it that way. But again...
Do you have an idea how much the community, the contribution amount would be if, you know, if we go with the price match rate?
Maybe a few thousand dollars, ten or twenty thousand dollars. So you may, you know, decide that's not valuable enough for you, or it's something you could put towards a program that you didn't have funding for.
I'm sure Administrator Nable will find a way to spend it. Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
So, yeah. So three years from now, we're making some competitive bids, and I think it should be pretty clear what has been happening.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Have a good evening. And we're going to backtrack one moment. Here we had...
(inaudible).
Yes.
(inaudible) that for you?
We had our Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have Pastor Carl Williamson here from the City of Hope, who's going to offer us a prayer this evening.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Today's better to be seen than seen.
And the Department of Eds? Good to see them. Well, let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for hearing our prayers. Thank you for being a God who is full of compassion, wisdom, and has much understanding to give us. And that's what we pray for tonight. We pray for wisdom for decisions that have already been made, decisions that need to be made. And we pray for wisdom for those who need to implement those decisions. And we do pray for understanding that each one of us will understand the role, the responsibilities, the duty, and that we might be faithful and will help us to do that. And God, please work in the hearts of the people, the citizens of Zion, to make more, to take a more active role in the community, our community, and the city government. God, you are the true refuge and the one from whom we get true lasting peace. But we do pray that you would put your protection upon the city, that it would truly be a place that could have peace, and that we would have peace mentally, physically, spiritually. So we ask your blessings upon us as the people of Zion. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Item number six is citizen comments. And since I see we have a couple of new people here, I want to read the procedure for public comment at city council meetings. The opportunity to speak to the council is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the city. The city council appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The council strives to make the best decisions for the city, and public input is very helpful. The city must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. It is unlawful for any person to disturb or interrupt a meeting of the city council. Please be respectful for the duties of the city council and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address, and then address your comments to the council. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. I think we have a timer when three minutes is up. And please be factual and courteous, and the council requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the council or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The city council does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but chances are we will address them during our departmental commentary. First up, Mary Lou Hilterbrandt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I was not able to be here for the February meetings, and I'm going to give you the February and March reports right now. During the months of February and March, your as the volunteers gave 100.75 hours in February and 144 and a half hours in March of service for a value to the city of $7,830.75. We assisted the police department with traffic at three different scenes. We assisted with the sirens test both months, and assisted with rehab and traffic at a fire. We assisted the Park District with Easter egg hunt and traffic for the food pantry both months at New Tech. We held our monthly meeting, and members attended monthly training in Lake County. We did duty times at the center for maintenance and upkeep. Repairs were done to correct the springboard system leak in the bay. If you are interested in being a positive influence in our city, new volunteers are always welcome. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mary Lou, and I think I saw you when you were heading to one of your fires.
Yep. Yeah, I'm much, much higher than my former reading ability.
Trying to keep a pulse on what's happening in the city. Ana Ramos?
I'm here behind.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm having a difficult time reading this name, but it's from 822...
That's me.
Okay. Can you tell me your name?
Joyce Allen.
Joyce, okay.
Excuse me, sir, but I appreciate you coming to speak at the city council, but what I have to say, it's pretty serious, and I did more than three minutes, so I may point out to talk to you. That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, is Helmut Peter.
Yeah, this is me. I'm here, I'm going to have a little bit of a 1903 Kenosha Road project.
Yes.
Do you want me to get into that now, or would you consider it?
You can express your views about it now, and then it's on our agenda to vote for it, or so, fight or avoid.
All right. Thank you. It may take more than three minutes, so I...
Well, our public comments are limited to three minutes.
Will I have an opportunity to discuss this, would you consider it, or...
Well, we could, we'll have departmental commentary after, and if they're, after the vote, we can, you can talk with whoever is necessary to talk to.
All right. Well, let me just briefly go through. The petitioner has requested that the subject be rezoned from the existing LM Limited Manufacturing District to a G1 General Industrial District to accommodate a truck repair facility along with leasing of truck parking spaces, which is necessary. There's a reason it is necessary to accommodate the truck leasing spaces. However, the truck repair is permitted as a conditional use, special use within the existing LM zone. The plan commission felt that the use was not appropriate for that particular site due to traffic, truck traffic issues which arose from the adjourned property orders. We feel that this project is consistent with the standards established by hearsome ordinance with two special uses and rezoning, and that we have made provisions, adequate provisions to mitigate some of those complaints and issues that the neighbors brought up. As a matter of fact, the truck traffic generated in this particular project is substantially less than some of the uses permitted by right. For example, the freight transfer facility is permitted by right in the LM district, and it's going to generate a lot more traffic than truck traffic in this particular project. The warehouse distribution facility is permitted by right within this particular district, and it's going to generate substantially more traffic. We believe that our proposal is less intrusive than some of these projects that could be developed and done by right without review by the plan commission or city council. Have you had the opportunity to look at, to review some of the supporting materials that have been submitted?
Yeah, our building director and building commissioner have been able to do that.
So, you know, again, just to be brief, I have some, I have the material with me, but I would like to take a look at it and review it, look at the, we prepared some plans, potential plan development. Again, it's a special use, so the city does have some...
You can finish your talk there.
All right. It's a special use of the city does have the ability to put some conditions on this project to make it more reliable, so to speak, and less intrusive, which, you know, I believe we already have. So I'm prepared to answer any useful questions when you consider the project.
All right. Thank you. Item number seven is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes. A regular meeting held on April 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Bills, vouchers 145590 through 145660 drawn on Huntington National Bank in aid.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight, consider passing resolutions as follows. 8A, amending the personnel authorization per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The personnel authorization is the city's authority to hire and fill positions. What we put on the authorization is what we're allowed to go to. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to fill those positions, but we've been in discussions with the High School District 126 about expanding our school resource officer program, but there's things that need to happen on the city side for us to get our ducks in a row before we can move forward of that program. So some of the items that we have on here tonight are getting kind of those items ready so that when if the high school wants to proceed with an SRO program, that basically they're not waiting on us for that, and we can get it implemented. So the first step in that is the addition of one of school resource officers, move to three. We have two over in District 6, the elementary district 6 right now, that's got a very successful program. So if we move forward with this, we would fill that position. If we did not, we don't, you know, we did have that vacant position, but it would just be on the personnel authorization to allow us to perform. So I would recommend approval of the change as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to amend the personnel authorization? I'll make a motion to amend the personnel authorization motion as presented. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item HB, approving a site plan modifications to Zion Crossings PUD for property located in the city of Zion. ACM McDonald's USA LLC per Director Ians.
Thank you, Your Honor. ACM McDonald's USA LLC, requesting a PUD amended to modify the probable legal interference plan by removing parking to the north of the park within the property lot to allow for space for the construction of the building and the setup. Here for 124th and 13th, Commissioner, the reference to approve the PUD amendment request.
Is there a motion to approve the site modification?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Question, do, with this approval, when do they expect to start laying the groundwork for construction?
I anticipate it to be, they're assuming that's my thought.
Really? Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine, consider passing ordinances as follows. 9A is consider filling one sergeant vacancy and requesting the name of the next qualified candidate from the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Sergeant Eligibility List per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. I respectfully request the city council approve the promotion of the next qualified candidate from the current sergeant's promotion eligibility register released by the Zion Fire, Zion Board of Fire and Police Committee. Promotion of the sergeant is necessitated by the impending retirement of Sergeant Jason Adams, who recently just did 25 years of service for the city. The department's rank of sergeant, the fully staffed and many sergeants, upon the promotion of the next qualified candidate, Emmanuel Rivera, and the retirement of Jason Adams.
Is there a motion to approve the sergeant vacancy?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell? Second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. And...
Mr. Mayor, would you mind if we present him with his badge?
Yeah, you've got a lot of help here tonight, so you've got a lot of heat in the house. Congratulations, and come on up.
(inaudible) So, Mayor and Commissioners, just want to present Manuel Rivera. He's been with the department for seven years now. He has been dedicated in many forms and fashions of his work. I think last year and several other years, he's been a top DUI enforcement officer. So we're unfortunately going to lose some of that aspect. He's going to be now running the ship, but he will be able to direct his young officers to do the same thing that he's done himself. So congratulations, man. And as customary, the better half gets to pin your badge. Good luck. (inaudible) 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 Thanks, first and foremost, my two biggest supporters, my wife and my daughter. Other reason that I got into police work, I was security for almost kind of, always wanted to get into law enforcement and wanted to get the approval when I began to get myself in this profession. I want to thank everybody that's here, all officers that have worked with me and helped support me in getting to this position. And I want to thank the commissioners and mayor here, and let you know that I'm ready to take on this position and work not only for the community, but for the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause) We'll do an in-house luncheon. He's in a two-week course right now, supervision course, so you'll get your advice.
We look forward to that. Are they violating the noise, aren't they?
(laughing) (inaudible)
All right. 9B is authorizing Marsh &amp; McLennan Agency LLC to provide insurance brokerage services and renew certain insurance policies, workers' compensation, workplace violence, per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We finally have some good news when it comes to insurance renewals. Marsh &amp; McLennan, formerly insurance, negotiated our workers' compensation, our site insurance, and our workplace violence insurance premiums. They went up to market for us, and the workers' compensation actually came back, current providers, IPRF, they came back with a 17% rate reduction. However, IC RMT, who handles all of our liability and other lines, actually came in with a quote that's a 34% reduction over our current rate, which results in a $220,000 savings over our current premiums. Big portion of that is we've been very diligent over the past five years, tightening up some workers' complaints, getting clients to get back to work quickly so claims don't drag on, and just reduce, implemented some safety commissions and things like that to reduce those claims. So that's been reflected in these premiums, which is great to see. So we recommend moving to IC RMT at that annual premium of $636,535. Our site reliability insurance, the current provider declined renewal. We've been seeing that with a lot of site insurance providers in the market. It's been very, it's shrinking quite a bit. However, we did get a quote from CFC, which is a 19% decrease over our current, so a $4,700 savings, and it does have enhanced coverage and it reduced deductible from $25,000 to $10,000. So we actually are getting a better deal by them not deciding to rule with us. We've got another carrier. And then finally, our workplace violence, with every remaining of McDowell, and no change in the premium or coverage, workplace violence, a premium of $14,327. So I would recommend renewal of all three policies from the year ending April 30th, 2025, as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this renewal.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? I'd just say, great job with that. It's a lot of money that we've been able to save.
You can say that.
So congratulations on doing a great job with that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 9C, authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the Zion Professional Firefighters Association and City of Zion for May 1, 2024 through April 30, 2027, per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.[1779.51] The current collective bargaining agreement with our fire union expires April 30th. We've been in negotiations with them over the course of the past three, four months, and the result of that is a contract favorable for both sides. I always say that when you go in negotiations, if one side leaves happy, then you probably didn't have the most fair contract, so we ended up with one that's fair for both sides. It was a good process going back and forth with them, very cooperative compared to prior years. But that being the case, I would recommend the approval of this collective bargaining agreement as presented for the three-year period ending April 30th, 2027.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Just the only comment I'd like to make again, great job Administrator Nable, and you mentioned something that's been, I think, really crucial for our residents to know and our employees to know. These negotiations, which can be contentious at times, that's not happening now. Over the last five years, it's been a great process where we're hearing each other. So, nice job with leading the negotiation.
No offense to our legal counsel, but actually, the past negotiations with a lot of our unions have actually not even had a term of experience. We've been able to, we run everything by them after the fact.
It's amazing how smooth the operations are. Strap a lawyer.
But nobody's coming in distrusting and feeling like they need legal representation at the table, and it's going well.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number nine D, amending section 98-91 of Article Four, Chapter 98, a Zion Municipal Court regarding penalties for violations of the city code as it pertains to controlling weeds, per Director Iansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The staff is requesting to amend the section 98-91 of Zion Municipal Court issue fine for violation of failure to maintain long grass and weed in the city's engine and height. Currently, when the owners are blessed to maintain the property, city sent a notice of violation. If the property continues to be noncompliant, the city will maintain the buildings built for service improvement and maintenance proper. These invoices are typically ignored, that's why they have their due issue fines for compliance.
Is there a motion to amending section 98-91?
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Director Iansson, in terms of the process of, if we leave it as it is and get a lien on the property, what's that process like to actually collect on the lien or take ownership of the property at some point?
The only time you collect is typically when the house sells, but usually for the share sales, pay sales, stuff like that, those things are just wiped out, so it's a lot of that.
And going through this way, then this would come out of income tax, is that...
Yes, once you go through the proper due diligence.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number nine E, authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a school resource officer between Zion Benton Township High School, District 126, and the City of Zion, per Chief Barton.
All right. Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, I have an IGA intergovernmental agreement. Respectfully request review and approval of this intergovernmental agreement between the City of Zion and Zion Benton Township High School, 126, specifically pertaining to the school resource officer program.
Now, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement.
Motion by McDowell. Will I have a second?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Is there no IGA previously in place?
No, ma'am, not for 126. We do have one for District Six, but the high school district, we do not have.
Any additional questions?
So, I know you guys have been working hard on this in terms of senior resource or school resource officers. Some communities in Chicago are actually starting to move away from them. Can you talk about the benefits of actually having sworn personnel in the school?
Yes, sir. We have, we have a couple, a year and a half now of data, almost two years of data at District Six that we can reach to. The goal of an SRO that we're looking to is enforcement is last. That's the last option of what we're looking to do. We're looking for mentorship, growth, community partnership, teaching young folks different options that they might have. For some data, we look to District Six where we've had a reduction of calls of police officers responding to the school for incidents requiring attention and upwards of arrests has reduced by about 1,000%, so in District Six. Significant decrease, and most of that is just done through presence, just being present and having an authority figure there. But a lot of it is the communication and the networking that these officers are having with these kids so that they teach them other ways of expressing their emotional need, so to speak. So, we've seen a tremendous success at that middle school one. We're hoping that we can continue that path forward for the high school. And again, this is, as Administrator Nable said earlier, this is laying the groundwork so when the school is prepared and ready to sign on to this agreement, we're, they're not waiting on us. We're ready to go.
And are we coming up, so, another point with successful programs for a school resource officer is having the right officer. So are we writing up a separate job description to cover applicants for this role?
Yes, sir. We have that in place now. That's what we utilize for District Six. But this is a partnership. This isn't us dictating, and it's not the school dictating one way. This is a partnership between the two of us. And the school, we offer that up by union contract requirements to the officers, and then we allow the school to interview those officers, and they make the selection. We can give them a few officers to pick from, the best qualified that we're going to weed out, and they're going to make the selection for that because it is a partnership. We want them to have a comfortable relationship with that individual.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, going back to that 1,000% change in number, I can remember a couple of years ago, prior to the pandemic, when there were huge issues over at the middle school, and then it matriculated over to the library. So much to the point that a lot of residents, some of the leadership in the community came together at the library and said, "How do we resolve this?" And because of that SRO program, it's been, hasn't been an issue over the last several years. So, it's been effective.
Very well. Steve Iansson, my former known staff, was there with his and his...
All right. Madam Clerk, unless we have any other questions, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine F, authorizing and approving an agreement with Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab to continue to use the crime lab, per Chief Barton.
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This is, this is a housekeeping item. We renew, we have a crime lab that we renew with every year. Attached is the quote, I respectfully request the approval of the attached invoice for the Northern Illinois Regional Crime Lab, LAB, or Crime Lab. Zion Police Department uses this crime lab to process evaluating inheritance for criminal prosecution.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement with the Northern Illinois Regional Crime Lab?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes and Fryerson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 10, discussion authorization approval, eight tabulation of bids, 2024 material bid, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Attached are the tabulated bid results for petroleum, oil, lubricant, and asphalt and aggregate bids that were held on April 2nd. Staff request and recommend approving the lowest responsible bidders for these materials as presented. Funding for these materials will be items within the fiscal year 25, Waterfront and General Park. Bid tabs will be available on the City of Zion website.
All right. Do we have a motion with tabulation of bids? Accept the bid.
Make the motion to accept the bids.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 10B, consider zoning docket 24-Z-8 in ordinance requesting a zoning change from light manufacturing to G1 general industrial for the property at 1903 Kenosha Road, per Director Iansson. Planning and zoning commission recommends to deny the request.
Thank you, Your Honor. Down with you, Paul Seaman speaking of zoning to light manufacturing and general industrial and property located at 1903 Kenosha Road. The reasonable quote is to limit the type of special use of the property operated by a tough service repairer slash legal person to build and to prevent the use of the type line in the residence of Zion and Townhomes across the street of Horace City. There is a motion and a second to approve that addition of the special equipment to be approved. At the April 4, 2024, by the National Commission, they recommend denying the health care program for the one.
Okay. Mr. Peter, if you'd like to comment before we have a motion in a second on this?
Yes, thank you. The, the main reason that the phone petition denied, or order to deny a request is based on traffic, truck traffic. I have my notes here, so... The subject property is located on the inside of Kenosha Road, across from the Highland Drive, just north of this intersection with 21st Street. Property is owned LM, limited manufacturing, which is the predominant zoning in the area in the north of the subject property, is owned LM. Parcel to the east of the subject property is owned LM, and the parcels to the south of the subject property, two parcels, is owned LM and G1 general industrial. And they are developed with industrial uses. The comprehensive plan of the City of Zion calls for the property to be developed with industrial uses. The uses across from the subject property on the west side are multifamily residential, specifically townhomes, zone, are to plan unit development. The petitioner wants to develop property with a truck service and repair facility along the truck parking spaces, which will be leased or rented to other small independent operators. The current LM zoning does allow truck sales, repair, and leasing as a special use. However, the leasing of the parking spaces requires a rezoning to G1 general industrial. That's the only reason for the request for rezoning. We're not looking to increase the intensity of development. We're not looking to, for any relief from the fault standards or other standards of the zoning ordinance. As a matter of fact, our plan of development provides for a lesser intensive development of the site. Currently, LM, both LM and G1 industrial properties can be developed with a 90% impervious area, meaning building and parking or coverage. We are proposing about a 55% to 60% impervious coverage and the balance 40% to 45% in open space and landscape. It's much lesser intensive use than would normally be permitted in the, in those zoning districts. The joint property owners are concerned about truck traffic or increase in truck traffic over what exists right now. Some industrial zone pieces of property, industrial zone properties do generate truck traffic. We estimate a total generation of approximately 10 to 15 trucks on a daily basis. As I said previously, there are a number of uses within the LM district, current zoning, which are committed by right, which can generate substantially much more truck traffic than what our particular use would. Furthermore, I think we've done a very good job, if you've seen the site plan that proposed, the plan, to mitigate any of the issues, other issues that the neighbors have had with ISA order, you know, and truck noise and smoke and exhaust, et cetera, by setting that, setting those, that part of the use back into the middle to rear of the property. The closest truck parking space to those townhomes is roughly 520 feet away. The frontage of the property is predominantly open space landscaping. We have our stormwater management facility on the frontage, so, and we've got substantial on the landscaping that we would be doing along the shield hall properties surrounding the project. The petitioner also has about 10, 12 trucks on the phone that they would be parking there, and the balance of parking spaces will be leased to other independent operators. And the way, what they do is that they're over the road, they're out on the road, cross-country, two to three weeks at a time. They come back, they park their cars or their trucks there. They don't transfer any freight, it's not a freight transfer station. They leave there for a week, come back, and then start whole cycle over again. All the trucks, trailers are empty, nothing is stored on site. This is basically parking. And the two uses really have to feed off each other. The truck repair feeds off of the parking, and they really need for this to be successful based on the experience of the petitioners and other projects that they've had. Need to work together. The project is located on Kenosha Road, which is under the jurisdiction of Lake County Public Transportation. So any access needs to be approved. And then, they need to approve the access. We will need to do a traffic study to determine what the geometry will be for that access. Obviously, that will, you know, make sure that we meet all of the ordinance requirements with regard to safe, efficient access in a property. The issue that we have is I don't, I don't believe that traffic or truck traffic in this particular regard should be the deciding factor of what use is permitted on the property or not. There are, I think the main issue is, is industrial piece of property, it's going to generate truck traffic. We need to mitigate, we need to mitigate the adverse impacts as much as we possibly can, and I think we've done that. I think we meet all of the requirements established by ordinance with regard to rezoning for special use. And we respectfully request that we approve our petitions as filed.
Okay. Any questions for our...
Mr. Peter, was it?
Yes.
So is this the only location that you guys have like this? Or do you have other developments similar to this?
Right now, petitioners have, have had other locations in the past, smaller, and they've done some market valuation, feel that this is the world business, obviously, and they feel that this is the, one of the better locations due to proximity to 41, the tollway. And, you know, would help, obviously, further their project.
Are you working with a broker, or did you come to the site selection on your own?
No, we work with a broker.
And then, given the amount of trucks that you're saying per day, looking at your concept plan here, this says one hundred and eighteen spaces?
Yes.
And that's just for trucks, not including boat storage? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, it's not boat storage, but we have some, in addition to truck repair, they repair boats and RVs and diesel engines. So we have an area right south of the building that you see, the repair facility, for temporary storage of boats and RVs while they're being repaired. And that's just a temporary storage area. The rental is predominantly semi-trucks.
And I assume getting this far, you guys have taken some sort of estimates on what it would take to build out this plant?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you mind sharing ballpark, what those numbers look like?
The property is going to be developed in phases. We're not going to do the entire project itself. But you're looking at the first phase, probably somewhere around a million dollars.
And how many phases over what time period were you considering for this?
I would probably say two to three phases at the most over a four-year period.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You said you mitigated any adverse impact. So what was the mitigation for the concern for the safety for children walking to school?
The property, as I said, has access to a county road, which is controlled by Lake County Department of Protection. We will need to do traffic impact study. And based on that, the county will determine what improvements are required to access the site. Which could be widening and turn lanes, okay, so making it safer than what it is right now. So we're not going to be able to put in sidewalks on both sides of the road, all the way down to Twenty First Street where they're going to go. But the frontage, our frontage, will be a lot safer than what it is right now with the traffic improvements.
And my last question, at the planning and zoning committee meeting, I wasn't clear in terms of what the hours of operation?
Yes, predominantly during the day, seven AM to five, six, you know, PM.
Would you mind if I have a question? So, Mr. Peter, how are you doing tonight?
I'm having a good time.
Good. Are you the petitioner or petitioner's lawyer?
Petitioner. No, I am the consultant.
Oh, you're a consultant, okay. When you, and I just, I want to talk about the hearing before the zoning board of appeals. I'm sorry, planning commission's zoning board of appeals through the joint commission. Existing uses of surrounding property, Freedom Court is right across the street, correct?
The Freedom Court is, yeah, it's across the street from Highlands Drive.
Sure. And that's a residential subdivision, correct?
It's a residential subdivision.
And you were at the hearing, correct?
I'm sorry?
You were at the hearing, the planning commission's zoning board of appeals, and many people from the Freedom Court subdivision came here and talked about it, correct?
Yes.
And they mentioned the sidewalks, correct?
No, they, I don't think sidewalks were ever mentioned. They talked about their concern of additional truck traffic and potential conflicts with students. There's kids walking to school, conflicts with school buses.
Sure.
We can't control sidewalks.
Well, of course not. Especially in the residential neighborhood.
Right.
Okay. Did you submit a traffic study?
We did not submit a traffic study.
Did you submit a review from the Lake County Division of Transportation regarding curfew traffic impact?
No, but that will be...
Did you submit a traffic impact analysis?
That will be done, it's required by Division of Transportation.
So that's a no?
We're not going to do that now unless it's required by, you know, by the municipality or by ordinance.
But it was your submission and your application to go forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes asks an excellent question. The hours of operation, you said predominantly seven to seven or something, what did you say?
During the day, seven AM to five, six PM.
But you said predominantly, you said not strictly or exclusively, correct?
That's what I said, yes.
Okay. So does that mean there would be overnight working or anything like that?
No, that has not been the case.
Okay. What do you mean it hasn't been the case? Nothing's going on?
Other operations that they have.
But there's no set parameters, or there was no evidence to that? Before the zoning board of appeals, sorry, planning commission zoning board of appeals, when you presented the hearing, correct?
There was no what?
You didn't say that there would be no overnight. You actually said that you implied the facility would not be operating overnight for the most part, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There was conversation about noise, correct?
There was a conversation about noise.
And conversation about smoke from trucks?
Yes.
Okay. And general impact and the quality of life so close to a residence, correct?
Right, and I think we address those issues.
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much.
That was one of the concerns that we negotiated by pushing everything back off the road.
Okay. Thanks.
I think in discussion with our commissioner that what we would probably like to do is move this to...
To table this item until, I'm going to throw out maybe at least next month. Reason being, I think you raised some very good points in terms of what's allowable under the existing zoning. However, there's still a series of concerns that we just can't ignore from the residents in the area, and wondering if you would be willing to work with our director to see if there's anything that we can do to mitigate some of those concerns and make sure that you're the right fit for this project.
I'd be happy to do that.
We've had some situations in the past where folks have come in standing exactly where you are, and, you know, the yes has been given, but then there's nothing on the back end to make sure that the performance is what we need it to be as a community.
And I think I've made reference to that, that being a special use, that the city has the ability to, you know, require some conditions, special conditions.
Yeah, we understand that. But again, just not to drag it out tonight and to give you a second chance at it, I'm proposing that we table it for two meetings.
Item B and C.
Correct.
Okay, so...
It's a motion.
We have a motion for first.
I'll second the motion to table until the next meeting. So not May seventh, but May twenty?
Do you want?
May twenty.
May twenty first?
May twenty first.
May twenty. I agree. Oh. Okay, maybe May twenty first is not the best meeting.
First meeting in June.
First meeting in June?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're going to be at the ICSC.
Good point. Thank you for that.
One of them.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Right, table.
To table until the first meeting in June.
That was for items?
B and C. Ten B and C.
Yeah, since they are interlinked, that makes sense.
So I understand correctly, do you want us to work with the director and address some of these concerns voiced by the neighbors?
Yes.
Yes. We'll have a conversation and we'll give some more clear guidelines.
All right.
Next, June fourth.
June fourth. All right, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five zip to table. Table. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Item number ten D is consider filling one patrol officer vacancy and requesting the name of the next qualified candidate for the Board of Fire Police Commissioners Patrol Officer Eligibility List contingent upon ZBTHS District One Twenty Six, approving in an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Zion for the use of an SRO pro chief bar.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and the commissioners. This kind of closes out the series of SRO conversations for the night, but the assignment of an officer at Zion Government High School as a school resource officer for the upcoming school year will create a vacancy in the full range. That negatively impacts the staff members and the police response. Therefore, contingent upon approval by District One Twenty Six Board, I respectfully request the approval to hire one officer from the current eligibility register to fill the vacant. Zion Board of Fire Police Commissioners release the names of available candidates to regular meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. This request is being made in advance of the District One Twenty Six approval to meet the deadline for entry into the police academy starting on May fifth, and is only contingent upon the ZBTHS Board approving the IGA and filling the school's resource officer position.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Item number ten E, Consider Approval of Hotel Motel Tax Grant Application for Elite Striders for Administrator Neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Every year we allocate about thirty-five thousand dollars out of our hotel motel tax fund for grants, for advertising, promotional marketing, to try and bring tourism to the community, bring events to the community that encourage tourism and overnight stays in hotels. Elite Striders, proud group organization, has applied for one of those grants. They have applied in prior years. It's a great event for the community, it's historically well-attended, and just a good image booster for the city. The application request, however, was for seven thousand dollars and fifty-eight hundred of the eligible expenses detailed in the application that they needed requirements. So I recommend approval of the grant, but added amount not to exceed fifty-eight hundred dollars.
All right, is there a motion to approve? So, motion by Fryerson, second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Third grade organization.
Yeah, they've been the national champs, and they've had a couple of really nice events here that have been able to attend those the last couple of years since. All right.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Number eleven, item number eleven, Departmental Commentary, Director Ianson. All right, Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. I received a notice from Lake County Steel. They are hosting a public meeting from five to seven PM on Wednesday, May first. They are going to be discussing and inviting all the public to discuss a new design for the intersection at Twenty First and Kenosha Road. I've heard talk of a roundabout for increasing lineage and putting in traffic lines. So if you can go there, express your opinion, read the order.
And where is that being held?
That's at the high school, did I miss that? That'll be at the high school at the south gym.
Oh, okay. On May first?
Yes.
And that time again?
Five to seven PM.
All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Streed?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Just a few quick things tonight. Other than tonight, the weather's starting to change for the good, I think, so this is an annual reminder for people cleaning up their yards, that city ordinance doesn't allow for the burning of yard waste. Campfires five feet in diameter in a marked spot. Four campfires are okay. I think we can't fire myself, but we just can't be burning yard waste in that. The second thing, I just wanted to make an announcement that this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. That's a fancy way for saying dispatchers at the here in Zion, Fire and Police Dispatch Center, so we want to recognize the work that they do for us. They're oftentimes, quite often, the very first contact that anybody has when they're in need of emergency, and sometimes non-emergency, so we appreciate the job our dispatchers do. This morning I visited the center and brought CJ Donuts and a small gift of our appreciation to them, and they liked that, so that was good. And finally, congratulations to Sir for his promotion, so it's good to see.
Chief, one question.
Yes.
With campfires on a property, how far should they be located from a building?
So city ordinance calls for twenty-five feet from a home or a fence line. We do recognize that some back yards don't always allow for a full twenty-five feet. We would just ask in those circumstances that they be as safe as possible, have a water source readily available, and again, have that campfire smaller in size and in an actual device made for campfires.
Okay.
Good question.
One a year. Chief Bar... Chief Bar?
All right, just a couple of things. This Elite Striders, they do an annual parade now. I'll have to refer to Ms. Brunson about when that date is, it's usually in May. That's a good time. They have competitive teams for their competition to come out. They do a pre, I guess it's a parade, pre-competition, so I think we walked it last year, and it was a good time to get out and interact with folks, so if you get out and see them, it's fun to see. As we continue to seek out grants, I just wanted to announce we were awarded another grant from the state of Illinois for body care and stuff. So, you know, these things are expenses that we see on our budget, but we continue to seek funding elsewhere and through other grants, and we received another grant for stuff that we already purchased, which is nice. So we kind of spent the money, and it was gone, and we got a little bit of it back.
All right. Hey, Chief Bar, with the parade, one of the things last year with the Elite Striders, there was an issue with timeliness with the arrival of some of the teams, the big gap in the parade. Are we going to be able to address that this year with the organizers? So that we're not tying up Twenty Seventh Street, they go Twenty Seventh Street from...
The answer is yes.
Okay, all right. All right.
Just for clarification, that's Saturday, May twenty-fifth, for the competition.
All right, thank you. Director of Galloway.
Are we still talking?
No.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who stopped by for Barb's last day yesterday or in the preceding few weeks. She really enjoyed all the people stepping in. We had former employees, we had residents. It was really, really, really neat for her, and she was very moved by. So thank you to everybody. And we're just going through the interviews, and by the next meeting I should have something on our replacement administrative assistant for ours, and then we'll move on to going for Barb.
Yeah, huge loss for us. Barb Fittinley's been with the city for several decades.
Almost thirty-two.
Yeah, we were trying to get her to thirty-two, but she's just done a tremendous job. I know whenever I've had to call her with an issue or question for a citizen, she's always been able to handle it with such tact, and that means so much in dealing with the public. And so we're going to miss her, but it was her time.
She didn't get out of bed this morning.
She off today?
She did, no.
No, so our next... And so we'll have to call her this week, probably at eight o'clock, and ask where she's at.
You can do that, I'm not.
Eight AM with PM. She keeps the late hours.
Yeah, the mayor can make the call. I'm not calling at eight o'clock.
I'll do it.
Well, she would probably come in if you had...
Yes, she would come in, miss the call, because she doesn't look at her cell phone at night. The city would miss the call and then come rushing thinking there was an emergency.
No pranks. All right. Administrator Neighbors?
Just one update, we're well, the process for Fire Station Two, a much needed replacement of a crumbling station out there, is underway. Again, we selected Kenosha for our construction management services. We'll have an agreement before council at the next meeting for de cale and out the scope of that. But we've also gone out to, for request qualifications on architect and engineering firms. The deadline for that, I believe, is at the end of this week. So we're moving forward. So we're moving forward, cobbling together the funding for it, and working with Ashley Schneider's office, we're waiting for a release on some community funding opportunities, but also protection on SGA funds, and then just funds that we've set aside over the past few years to, so that we can pay for this project without having to do any debt or talk to issuances. So should have an update for you on our architect, we're going to get the design process going here pretty soon. We want to have that done by the end of this year, the design and engineering, and be going out to bid for construction by January, that's here.
All right.
To be deterred.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right.
I was thinking, you really know how to clear a room. But no, not today.
I've got other ways.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Nope, nothing happening tonight.
I just want to take the moment to, Mr. Bermaner put something on my podium tonight, which I was sent earlier, about the state's $73 million project to protect the last remaining undeveloped Lake Michigan shoreline. And this is a huge win for us in so many ways. I know, working with the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, this is one of the things that they are working with communities along the lakefronts in the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River Basin to protect the erosion of the lakefront. And for some of us that have been here for a while, Mr. Roberts? I know you looked at me. There was a point when 173 went all the way down to the lake, and there was restaurants and homes there. Now that ends at a diner, just east of a diner. So they're putting, I'll just read a little bit of the article, and I'll try to do my Evelyn Wood speed reading. Illinois Beach State Park in Zion, a $73 million state-funded project, is aiming to stabilize the last undeveloped Lake Michigan shoreline in Illinois. In the process, help protect endangered native species. The state park near the Wisconsin border encompasses six and a half miles, about 10% of Illinois's Lake Michigan shoreline. But the underdeveloped shoreline can erode as much as 100 feet a year, according to the Illinois Capital Development Board, which is partially overseeing the project. And for any of us that have been down to the lakefront since we were young kids, we've seen how the shoreline has changed a little bit. So they're have breakwater structures that they're putting out there, they're putting different structures out there for the different aquatic life that's in the lake and protecting a lot of the species surrounding the lake, Illinois Beach State Park, again, which is the third highest tourist attraction in the state of Illinois. So that's pretty good, some pretty good things happening around here with our city that's been happening over the last, been happening for a while. And once again, I know every day, some of us get calls about the things that aren't going, perceived that aren't going right in the city, but we have a lot of victories. And we have to continue to celebrate those in a quiet fashion as we have, but also to continue to look forward the 10 to 20 years out, what we want the city to look like when we're not running it. So again, I thank all of you for the hard work that you do here to make this place such a great place to live, and people are starting to see that now. Item number 12, announced that on May 7th at 7:00 PM, we have a Zion City Council meeting. And May 21st at 6:00 PM, we have a Zion Township Board meeting, followed by a Zion City Council meeting at 7:00. And item number 13 is closed session pursuant to file by LCS 120-2, open meetings for the discussion of file pending and/or probable imminent litigation sale of purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel personnel. You want me to repeat that? Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to go into closed session.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for coming out tonight and participating in our city council meeting.